That makes you officially old.
I'd like to call the city Muskegon City Commission meeting for July 12, 2011 to order. I'd like to welcome Pastor Josh Dear, new father from Lakeside Baptist Church, to lead us in prayer to be followed by the pledge. Pastor?
Thank you.
Could I ask everyone to rise, please?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this day and for all the many blessings that you shower upon us each and every day of our lives. Thank you for the gift of life, which is such a precious and miraculous gift, which only you can give. May we never take the gift of life for granted, and may we protect it, cherish it, and celebrate it as would be pleasing to you. Thank you for the gift of family, for blessing many of us with fathers, mothers, brothers, and sisters who love us unconditionally and who help make our lives better in so many ways. Lord, we know that when fathers do as you call them to do, they remind us in many small ways of the perfect love of our heavenly Father. But we also know that when fathers fail and fall short of their responsibilities, we can still look to you and trust that you will never leave us nor never forsake us, and that your love will never fail. So, Lord, thank you for the families that you've blessed us with. Help us to never take that gift for granted, but to do all that's in our power to demonstrate love to our families and make our families and our homes be a reflection of your love for us. Thank you also for the gift of community, where friends and neighbors have a desire to really know each other, to share in the joys and sorrows of the people around them, and to act as your hands and feet to those whom we know are in need. Thank you for blessing us with a community like the city of Muskegon, where beauty, majesty, and wonder of your creations surrounds us, and where many neighbors really do desire to work together to make this a better place to live. We thank you also for the wonderful leaders whom you've raised up to govern our way of life here in Muskegon. We thank you for putting within them a love for the place where they live and a desire to honor you with the decisions that they make. We ask you now to please be with these men and women as they consider the most pressing concerns of the day and consider how best to resolve these matters for the good of our city. May their lives and the lives of their families be richly blessed for their efforts to honor you with their decisions. Thank you again for hearing us this evening and for speaking to our hearts in the hour to come. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you like to introduce one of the newest citizens of the city of Muskegon to us?
Absolutely.
Just bring him right up.
Yeah.
Just make sure he gets on camera.
This is Luther Martin Dear, on May 11th, right here at his house.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing him with us and doing prayer this evening, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Galvin.
Here.
Commissioner Shepard.
Here.
Commissioner Spataro.
Here.
Mayor Wilmington.
Here.
Commissioner Waringo, absent.
Commissioner Wisnewski.
Here.
Commissioner Carter.
Here.
Thank you. Once again, we will wish Commissioner Waringo speedy recovery, and we look forward to having you back, Commissioner. First items on our agenda are honors and awards, and we'll have our acting city manager, Public Safety Director Tony Klebecker, will handle a couple of them. The first one is the recognition of our neighborhood associations for bicycle equipment donation.
Thank you.
Chief Klebecker.
Let me ask Officer Vanda Weir to move our prop out front here, if he would. We have two neighborhood associations that we would like to thank this evening for making a donation to the department. You know, in these tight budget times, any little bit, I often say, any little bit really helps. And these are, first of all, the new bicycles that we purchased this spring. The other bikes were 10 to 15 years old, so I've already talked to our bike officers. They're most appreciative for that. But on the back, you'll see a hard shell case for equipment and so forth. And this is the money that was donated by these two particular neighborhood associations that allowed us to purchase these cases. The old ones were kind of a soft case. It really didn't protect helmets and the equipment they carried. These are, from what I'm hearing, are really, really nice, so much so they can actually store their helmets in them. It's locking. So, very, very much appreciated. The two neighborhood associations that we'd like to recognize tonight, the first is the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association and also the Marquette Neighborhood Association. I know there are a number of representatives. I don't know how many of you would like to come up. I'd like to do this all at once. So, if Nelson would like to come up and Marquette would like to come up, we'll do this all at once. Now, allow you to introduce yourselves. I had a partial list of folks who are here, so. Come on, Larry. This is, step up to the mic, introduce yourselves and identify your neighborhood for us, so.
Okay. I'm Ruby Clark, Marquette Neighborhood Association. I'm president of Marquette Neighborhood Association. And Sandra is vice president, Sandra Boone. Yes, Sandra.
My name is Sandra Boone Thomas, and I'm the vice president of the Marquette Neighborhood Association.
I'm Susan Cruz, and I'm treasurer of the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association.
Good afternoon. My name is William Parker, and I'm the president of the Nelson Neighborhood Association.
And my name is Larry Spataro. You all know me. And I'm also the vice president of Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association, so.
I'm going to cheat, and I'll read the citation once because they both say the same thing. But for both the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association and the Marquette Neighborhood Association, "Our fellow citizens in recognition of their generous donation of the Muskegon Police Department, the association assisted, as did Marquette, in providing funding for bicycle trunks to be used by the Muskegon Police Department bicycle officers. The sturdy, secure trunks were a much-needed addition to the outfitting of the police bikes. The donation was typical of the continuous community support by the Marquette Neighborhood and the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association. The officers of the Muskegon Police Department are grateful for your support. On my behalf, on behalf of all the staff, we thank you very much." So. For Marquette.
Thank you.
And this is for Nelson.
Go ahead. The next item is for the Social Justice Commission.
Yes, I have with us tonight the Reverend Samuel Greer, who is chairman of the Social Justice Commission of Muskegon County.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for my opportunity to be here. I have the responsibility of doing a number of things, and one is I'm a preacher, so I'll move this right along. I worked with the Queen Esther Missionary Baptist Church in Muskegon Heights. I'm the president of the General Baptist State Convention of Michigan, and now I work with the Social Justice Commission of Muskegon County. The Social Justice Commission is made up of a number of faith-based members, as well as the city of Muskegon, the city of Muskegon Heights Police Department. It's made up of members from prosecutors' offices, made up of both school district superintendents, made up of the NAACP, made up of the Urban League. It's a number of individuals throughout our community. Our ultimate goal and aim is threefold. One, it is to bridge the gulf between the local community and criminal justice. Our goal is to be that voice that can speak both to a need and for a need. Second of all, it is designed to afford a pathway for young people and community people to be successful. In brief, an opportunity that we may be able to live in peace, that our communities will have peaceful surroundings. And then, thirdly of all, we hope to partner with educational systems whereby our children can have quality education, and I underline again, quality education, be it a major four-year university, simply be it a program of vocational training, that every child gets an opportunity to find his or her place in this world. Very excited over the fact that we've already met with the city of Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, rather, and have acquired a resolution of cooperation. We've met with the county of Muskegon and have asked for a resolution of cooperation from the county. We've been successful in both of those endeavors to have their support. Finally, we've already began work. You've seen it with gun buyback programs that are effecting movement within our area. There are other initiatives that are about to be announced. We thought that we would come to the city of Muskegon and ask of you a resolution of support, supporting the work that is already afoot. I'm very excited about what is moving on. There's a collaborative effort of many different groups coming together for the purpose, and to be very brief, the purpose is to bring peace and holistic efforts within our community. Very excited of the cooperation that we have between various entities and where we are, but more importantly, where we hope to be. That's a short sermon. Sometime when I get a chance to talk to you in detail. But, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for the privilege to appear to this commission, and I respectfully ask a resolution of support, supporting the Social Justice Commission of Muskegon County.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for the work that you have already done for the community, the successful gun buyback that your group put together here a couple of weeks ago. And we would hope that you would pass on to the other members of the Social Justice Commission our thanks for taking the time, the time that they've taken to work for our community. And I believe somebody would probably make a motion, Commissioner Spataro.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would very, very pleased to move that we adopt a resolution of support of the Social Justice Commission.
And I will have my wholeheartedly support of that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Shepard, to approve a resolution of support for the Social Justice Commission. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisnewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do want to comment to the neighborhood associations that we appreciate the work that you also do over and above for your neighborhood, the time that you spend to make sure that your neighbors are notified in the work that you do to make this a better community. Thank you very much. Is Bobby Cereal here? We got one. Could I ask you to step forward, please?
Wasn't quite sure who it was.
I pronounced him last night, Cereal?
That's correct. My pleasure to meet you. We have an honorary ambassador commemoration here for Bobby Cereal. Bobby lives next to one of our community neighborhood service homes that we built, and he's such a good neighbor that he volunteered his time, his lawnmower, and he's cutting the grass over there, so he's saving the community some money and providing some services and is a watchdog for our piece of property. So, Anita Bailey was kind enough to recognize that, and we appreciate your support for the community. And we want to recognize the efforts that you've done for the community with this presentation of this honorary ambassadorship.
Thank you very much. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk's summary request to approve minutes of the city commission meeting that was held on Tuesday, June 28, 2011. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Second reading, rezoning requests for the property located at 1753 Madison Street. Planning and economic development, summary request. Request to rezone the property at 1753 Madison Street from I-2 General Industrial to B-4 General Business District by Kurt Dykman, J&amp;J Discounts. The applicant would like to move his growing retail business to this location. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approving of the rezoning. Committee recommendation, the planning commission recommended approval of the request at their June 16 meeting. Second reading, rezoning requests for the property located at 2010 South Getty Street. Planning and economic development, summary request. Request to rezone the property at 2010 South Getty Street from I-1 Light Industrial to B-4 General Business District by Michael Vasquez. The applicant would like to open an auto dealership at this location. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Committee recommendation, the planning commission recommended approval of the request at their June 16 meeting. Consideration of bids, interior painting of the Robertson-Marshall elevated tanks. Engineering, summary request. Award the project to MK Painting Incorporated out of Windott, Michigan. MK Painting Incorporated submitted the lowest responsible bid of $167,000. Staff recommendation, award the contract to MK Painting Incorporated.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor Galvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, it's been moved by Commissioner Carter, to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisnewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any new business? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the commission tonight? Please step forward to the mic, and I need for you to give your name and address, please. Yes, sir.
My name is Benny Ross, 745 Benjamin Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan. First time here, not really knowing exactly what and how I'm supposed to be doing this, but.
Welcome. Just tell us what you want to tell us.
Okay. I'm speaking in regards to a water bill issue at a property that I own, 1916 Giro.
1916?
Correct. I had the opportunity of speaking with Kenneth Grant, as well as Timothy Paul, and they request that I come and let me know my issue of profit here. I had, I've owned it since 03, since 2003, and I know now that we've went to the monthly water bills yourself, for the most part. And this year, I've had a leaky toilet, twice. The first time, I thought it was repaired, okay, which was the flapper, okay? We addressed it back in February or so, February sometime, and I was issued a credit, okay, for my first problem with the same toilet. The second one just happened here, maybe a few months ago, whether it back in June or so, my June. I had one month of a leaky toilet, which cost me $427 for one month, 30 days. And as I was speaking with Timothy Paul, as well as Mr. Grant, Kenneth Grant, I was letting them know, I mean, they sent me a letter both times stating that you've got a problem here that you may want to look into. I had a tenant there that actually the first time had said that it had been running, okay, and that it needed to be addressed. So, we addressed it. I thought it was the flapper. The second time, again, when it happened, this time, it was the main bill or so, pretty much however it goes. But my question to them was, you know, I mean, again, I mean, you understand that I had this problem, okay? 30 days out, you guys are able to address a problem, not like before where it used to be three months out. And again, I asked them, even in regards to their leak adjustment, and how long had that been in place, okay, in regards to now we have to pay the water bill monthly. You know, I look at it like this. He says, you get one adjustment every two years, okay? Old policy, you figure you will look at, within two years period of time, eight payments. Eight payments within two years period of time, under your old policy. Now that you have this new policy, you have 24 payments within a two-year period of time. And it seems as though that the same policy is still in effect for a new policy of your monthly charging of your water. And it's just like I was just telling you, you know, I mean, I'm not looking for a handout, but again, I mean, you guys understood that I had a problem within a 30-day period of time, which cost me $427, which is pretty hard to pay for right now, even as far as due to my personal situations that I have going on. But I do want to address the issue and see if there's anything that can possibly be done about it. And I'm going, they told me that basically the hands, it was out of their hands, and I needed to address, you know, you guys. So, again, like I said, I don't know what I'm doing, or where else I'm supposed to go, or whatnot.
The worst thing that can happen is you're in the same boat that you're in, as we say, you know, and then you are where you're at. So, you've done the right thing to come.
And again, like I explained to them, you know, I'm not looking for, I mean, you know, one month, 30 days, you know, $427. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just.
Well, it's not as though during those 30 days that we raised the rate. That's the amount of water that probably went through there. And I can testify for myself that it doesn't, even if you know you have a sink that's dripping, it doesn't appear to be like you're losing very much water, and you take your time to repair it, but.
And I didn't know. You know, I thought it was repaired. And then, not only that, you know, I mean, I looked at it again to a point whereas, I mean, could it have been a defective meter or so? I mean, I just can't see. And the toilet was a problem because now, I mean, I couldn't do this any longer. I just went and bought a brand new. You know, I put a brand new one in because I can't afford things like this here to happen to me within a 30-day period of time. And again, like I said, you know, even to the point whereas, you know, you guys leak adjustments, how long has that one been in place? And is there anything that maybe can help others out, you know, in the future in regards to the new policy that you have now paying monthly instead of every three months?
Well, the idea be, I think, one of the reasons that we did it monthly is that if we'd have waited three months, your bill would have been maybe $1,100 or $1,200 at that point in time.
And I'd still be here, same.
Yeah, but the hole would be a lot deeper.
Right, right. Sometimes you're still in that hole. It's still, yeah. And again, like I said, now that you guys are able to help, you know, residents and people out a little sooner in these situations, I mean, do you still hold the same leak adjustment program that you have?
Well, I think. Are you asking because the policy was twice when it was 24 months, like we should multiply that out, and it should be like eight times that we willing to do an adjustment? I'm not so certain.
Well, you figure, again, like I said, you know, now, within a two-year period of time, you're paying 24 months. Whereas before, within a two-year period of time, you were paying eight times within that, within two years. And again, like you said, you know, you only get one for every two years, but that was based upon your old, your old policy too, as well.
Well, I might suggest to you that one is rather gift-giving. There are probably some utilities that don't give any.
What's that?
Well, for instance, if you traveled to Florida for the winter and you inadvertently forgot to turn your air conditioner off, or you turned your furnace up to 80, and you started getting heating bills that were extremely high while you were gone, and it didn't make sense because you weren't there, I don't know, because it's never happened, would the gas company, in fact, forgive a portion of your bill because you left? Now, I know it's not your fault that the toilet broke, but if you have a tenant there, the tenant bears some responsibility for that also. So, I think once is enough, but I don't. Commissioner Spataro?
Yeah, I don't know this is going to resolve anything. You know, our policy is what it is. But just an FYI, since the subject came up, because I learned this the hard way myself, the only way to tell if you've got a leak in the house is to turn all the taps off and then go check the meter. If everything's turned off and your meter's still moving, you've got a leak. And that's the only way to know that everything is proper and no leaks, because you may not see it, you may not hear it, but if your meter's still running and everything's turned off, you've got a leak, or you've got a bad meter. Either way, you know you need to bring somebody in and check it out. So, just, you know, for anybody listening, how do I avoid getting into this? That's the only way to know for sure if you've got a leak that's fixed. So, but as far as the policy, I see Mr. Paul in the back room. Maybe you can tell us what can be done, if anything.
Commissioner Carter?
I guess my question is, is your, I understand your concern about the $427 gas bill, and.
Water bill.
Water.
Excuse me, water bill.
Yeah.
Water bill. And are you, I'm kind of inclined to, you know, agree that, you know, I think a one-time adjustment every two years is pretty good, considering, like you said, if you look at other utilities, they don't even probably give you that for, I'm not sure, but for if something happens along that line. My question to you is, are you looking for a plan to help you get this down, or are you looking for relief on the bill?
Any type of assistance, any type of assistance. And it's just like I explained to Mr. Grant too, as well. You know, I'm looking at a $427 bill now outside of my first bill that I had that I got a $60, $70 credit for. You know, I told him I'll pay the $60, $70 credit back, just help me with this one here. You know, again, for 30 days, you know, outside of a leaky toilet, that you did address me, they did send their letter and say, hey, you know, something is going on there because it's consuming too much water, okay? And actually, after I got that letter, it says, you know, that you will be receiving, you know, a letter in your bill stating this here. I got the bill within the next week.
I guess I have a question for Tim. I guess my question is, what is our policy for payment of the water bills? I mean, do you have to pay them every three, I mean, what's the procedure as far as, could we take that bill and spread it over the next three-month bill, so you won't have to pay it all at once? Or, I mean, I guess that's my question.
Well, generally, our bills are due within a specified period of time, but we've, I think we've expressed in Mr. Ross that we would try to work with him. He's not scheduled for shut-off at this point, so he has some time to work with to get the bill paid. But our staff, our hands are tied by the city commission policy, and basically, I do want to point a couple of things, though. We did take into account, Mr. Ross was thinking about switching the old adjustment for the new adjustment. Even if we were to adjust his second bill under the current policy, it'd be about $70. It's not, it's not going to take care of a $427 bill. It's going to, you know, put a dent in it, but currently the policy is what it is, and, you know, we would try to work with Mr. Ross on some kind of payment arrangement. I think that's been expressed, but under current policy, we can't do a whole lot more.
I, you know, since it's really not going to make a $60, $70, you're really not going to make a big adjustment on it. If you pay that, you might as well pay the money on this. You're going to be paying the same money either way. I don't know. I'd have to speak to my colleagues here. Would you be willing if we made some kind of payment arrangements to spread that out over like a three-month period or whatever the finance department decided was equitable? Would that be a mutually good arrangement for you? Because at this point, I don't think there's consensus to give you another credit. But I think there's consensus to probably work with you on paying that, because I can understand he getting hit with a $427 gas bill once a month. That'd be kind of hard. understand getting hit with a $427 gas bill once a month, that'd be kind of hard, so.
For one month. And, and you know, they did, speaking with them, they did say that, you know, maybe we can help you with two months, you know, but 400, I mean, I can't do it. I mean, I can't.
Could you do it over 12 months? Could you do it over 12 months?
Yeah, I could do it over 12.
Would the commission agree that we would allow this gentleman, keep the house, keeps his tenant, keeps his water on, we don't have to face the shut-off to spread this bill out over 12 months?
Why not?
That's within the discretion of staff.
Well, not if we pass it as a motion.
That's right.
Well, I mean, they can see our consensus here, do we need to take a formal action?
Would that satisfy?
I mean, I'm not understanding what you guys are saying.
Well, basically taking the 427 and spreading it out over.
I want to point out one thing, Mr. Ross, I think you noticed, but the commission should also be aware that the, the bill was for a long period, the new bill is, the new bill's coming out, maybe out already, it's for $1,200, because the, the, the second fix was done sometime in the middle of the billing period, so, so we're talking $600 total.
Okay, so if we split it out, it's $50 additional a month over 12.
Correct.
Okay. Is that agreeable to you?
Yes.
Mr. Paul, is that all right from?
I'm glad, Commissioner, sir.
All right, okay.
Okay.
If it's any concession, it's a fee for $2,000. And I'd pay it in one month.
So you know how to feel.
I know exactly how you feel.
Yeah.
Thank you sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address the commission tonight? Commissioner Carter?
Seeing no one, motion to adjourn.
So, no.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Anything special you'd like to add?